I'd like to call the meeting to order, thank you. Welcome, councilors, welcome, I'd like to welcome our guests too in our auditorium here. And now I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilor Swaigstra for the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Friday, we got the sad news that George Herbert Walker Bush, the forty-first President of the United States, passed away at the age of ninety-four. Bush had a long career in public service, culminating with one term as President from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-three. During his time in office, Bush presided over the end of the Soviet Union, liberated Kuwait during the Gulf War, and strengthened ties with key American allies. It didn't take long for tributes from around the world to pour in upon news of Bush's passing. Now, on one level, this isn't surprising, as it is standard practice to say nice things about Presidents when they pass away. However, there is something much deeper and more heartfelt about these tributes. Friends and foes alike spoke as much about Bush's personal character as they did about his accomplishments in office. Bill Clinton, a former political adversary who defeated Bush in the nineteen ninety-two presidential campaign, wrote that his friendship with Bush was one of the greatest gifts of his life. Dan Quayle, who served as Vice President during Bush's term, stated that he was a,[89.72][89.72]"completely genuine, decent, and honorable person." His son Jeb Bush tweeted that his dad was "the greatest human being that I will ever know." These are not the typical boilerplate bromides that we often hear when a famous person passes away. Whether it was his lifelong faithfulness and devotion to his wife Barbara, his unflinching love and support to each of his children, or the gracious way he treated everyone who worked for him, George Bush's personal life was one of honesty and integrity. Bush was not a flashy President, and he was certainly not one of that nation's greatest orators. By his own admission, he struggled with "the vision thing," and preferred instead to do his job quietly and without drawing attention to himself. However, it was Bush's quiet consensus-building approach that enabled him to unite nearly the entire world against Saddam Hussein's invasion of Kuwait. When George Bush gave the Iraqi dictator a deadline of January fifteenth, nineteen ninety-one to get out of Kuwait, every world leader knew that he meant it and was prepared to back up his words with actions. The result was the highly successful Gulf War. It was no small feat to unite the nations of the world in a just cause and to maintain that coalition throughout the war. When the Berlin Wall came down in nineteen eighty-nine, Bush avoided over-the-top rhetoric and instead sought to build consensus for what he called "a new world order." Similarly, Bush managed to strike just the right tone when the Soviet Union collapsed in nineteen ninety-one. In both cases, Bush quietly worked the phones to make sure that other world leaders kept their remarks measured as well. This was a time for prudent action, not flamboyant rhetoric, and Bush was the right man for the job. With such significant achievements under his belt, it must have been hard for Bush to be denied a second term in office. A lesser man would have taken that defeat personally and become angry and bitter. However, Bush graciously accepted defeat and even became close, personal friends with Bill Clinton, the man who beat him. In fact, Bush and Clinton became so close that Bush's eldest son, George W. Bush, would often jokingly refer to Clinton as his brother from another mother. This quip was only half in jest, as Bush did in many ways become the father figure that Clinton himself never had. There is much we can learn from George Bush's life. If more politicians are inspired to follow in his footsteps, the world will be a much better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Swaigstra. Council, you have the agenda in front of you. I know you've all looked at it. I would like to have a motion to have dropped the agenda. Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Penner. Any discussion? Okay. Nothing in closing? Call for the question, all in favor? That's Carrie. We have the minutes of November twentieth, regular council meeting, on page one. Council, you've all reviewed them. I need a motion to approve. Councilor Swaigstra, seconded by Councilor Hebert. Any discussion? Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor? That's Carrie. Any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. It is exactly seven thirty-five, so we will go to the public hearing. That is bylaw twenty-one eleven, Special Service Plan, two thousand and nineteen oh one. Read the curbside collection and disposal of solid waste on page four. Council, I will now open the public hearing and close the council meeting. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an application by the city of Steinbach with Special Service Plan two zero one nine dash one. It is to renew the bylaw to allow the city to continue to charge the appropriate fees for the collection of curbside residential solid waste. First reading has been provided by council previously. Overall, recommendation from management is that council approve the second reading following the public hearing. And just in summary, the city's current curbside special service plan for the collection of solid waste was approved for two thousand and sixteen for a three-year period. That period will now be expiring at the end of two thousand and eighteen. And as required under the municipal act to continue the service, renewal of the special service plan is required under bylaw two one one one. Current rates that are being charged for individual residential units are a hundred and thirty-three dollars a year. The proposed fee schedule for the coming years, for two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-one, is an increase of four dollars for each of those respective years to then become a hundred and forty-five dollars a year in the year two thousand and twenty-one. As I mentioned, this is a plan that has been approved for the city of Steinbach previously. It is not something that's new. However, the rates are being set based on the estimated costs of providing the service. And as I suggested, recommendation is to give the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Workinteen. Is there anyone here wanting to object or have questions on this file? Would you please, I'd ask you to take the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Eleanor Penner, and my current address has been changed. Was thirty-seven North three two one, but it is, let's see now. I feel very foolish because it's been quite a job even getting that changed over, but it's now five three five Park Road West. And it's Steinbach, R five G two T four. And I don't know whether this is the place for my concerns or not, but I didn't know what else to do. I was at all the, I got annexed as of January. I was at all the meetings, including the last one in the foyer here where we could ask questions of different individuals. And I was told, along with others, asked specifically about the garbage and the, and the...
Road improvement.
Road improvement is wonderful. I have no problems with the road improvement in my place. That's very good. But we, that's one of the things we did ask for, the garbage and the recycling pickup. So, when I, I actually went January, February, March, all the way through September, and did not get any notice. We were told at that last meeting, we were going to get some information on when the pickup would start. That never happened. And finally, one time in the mail, I think this was this summer sometime, I got this. No cover explanation, nothing. And I just assumed it was just sent out. I don't know if you've had a chance to read this letter or not. I'd like to go through it again, if you don't mind. Your letter dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen states, "If you already received this curbside solid waste collection service, this levy was present on your two thousand and eighteen property tax statement, and referenced as 'curbside collection at a rate of a hundred and thirty-three dollars per residence.'" I have no problem with that. "Indeed, that fee was on my tax statement, and I dutifully paid for a service that I did not receive until September. Having attended all the informational meetings prior to and after annexation, I asked questions: three, road maintenance, no problem; garbage pickup, recycling services, no service, plus the change of address." And that has been a nightmare in itself, if any of you have gone through that. Winter came, no pickup. Spring came, no pickup. Summer came, no pickup. Meanwhile, I took my garbage to the city landfill site at ten dollars per visit on a monthly basis, and my recycling added to the recycling depot on Industrial Road or to the landfill site. In mid-July, my neighbors across the road had put out some garbage bags at the end of their lane, and I noticed that when I went west towards Mitchell, I went half a mile west, I'm right in the middle of that thirty-seven north, and there was another place with a long driveway, I don't know the name of the person, but they had garbage out at the same time. So I thought, "Well, maybe they know something I don't know." I watched that garbage for about three days until it got all torn apart, and then they finally picked up what was torn apart on both places. After that, I approached my neighbors, and they knew no more than I did. I actually went to them, and I went to the neighbors down the road, on the actual road that I live, to see whether they had heard anything, to make sure that I had somehow missed some letters. I went to the town office to explain the situation, nothing happened. And I was actually told that, they said, "Oh yeah, we'll find out," but it didn't happen. Then I got my tax bill. When I paid my taxes, I asked to talk to one of your employees about the possibility of getting a refund on charges for two thousand and eighteen for services not received. And I was told that the system is set up in such a manner that the procedure would be quite difficult to do that, to rectify that situation. If that's easy, I'll gladly take my refund, if you grant it. Otherwise, the suggestion was me to phone Eldon Walden to find out what was happening. I have no problems with Eldon, he's always been helpful in any time I've asked him for anything in the past. He said that collection would start after the Labor Day weekend. And it has, but not without its growing pains. Some days have been missed. I actually started keeping a record of the times my garbage has come since it started. September eighteenth is the first time it started for me, because I was away the first two weeks in September, and I told him that. Everything went fine. It was eleven-thirty to four P M. that I got services. October seventeenth, recycling was not picked up. October twenty-fourth, garbage not picked up. October thirty-first, they were picked up on varying times, all the time, and I think I've got it finally pegged when they do come now, or more or less, it changes every time. They both have been picked up last week, and I'm waiting to see what happens tomorrow. But I'm sure that it will come, because the service has been better once it's happened. So I have no problem with the fee of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars for two thousand and nineteen, but I have grave concerns about the injustice, the lack of communication, and forethought given to inform me when my collection would start. And I don't know, we have problems with mail lately, but this, this letter actually, that you sent me, the last one regarding tonight, it was written on October twenty-ninth in this office. It took nine days to come to my place. Go figure that one out, in spite of that this was before the mail strike was affecting our area. Anyway, that's beside the point. What I'm really wanting, I'm asking for you to consider compensating me for the amount of taxes paid from January to August two thousand and eighteen by not charging me in two thousand and nineteen for the months from January to August two thousand and nineteen in lieu of what I paid, I was, what I paid for the services, which I did not receive in two thousand and eighteen. I don't know whether that's feasible, but one way or another, I think I am entitled to some refund for paying for those services and not being properly informed about it. I have no problem paying the four-dollar difference. If you want to tax me for those months for four dollars, I'd be very happy for that. It's just, to me, it's, it's an injustice. I know it was very trying time that we all went through. I don't know if I have anybody here that was in that annexation, but it was quite a difficult time. And I know that there are some people, I know you're not responsible for the mail, but there are some people that don't even know that they've got to go to mailboxes out in the country. And I, I didn't, I didn't ask whether they got their garbage or not, because I'm sure they didn't, because the truck's been turning around my... But since I've had it picked up on a regular basis, the truck's been going to the Keating Road, and, not Keating Road, Twin Peaks Road, and you'll pardon me for using the names and rather than the numbers, and they've been going south the last little while. So, I know some response has been, has happened. And I'd welcome any questions that you have of me.
Council, do you have any questions for the objector? Councilor Penner?
Just to clarify, this is a separate issue from what we're voting on right now?
Yeah.
So I don't, first, I don't think this is, this is separate from the objection for what we're actually dealing with. So maybe it should be tabled, or we should talk about it once the public hearing for what we're actually voting on.
Yeah, this is a, this is a separate issue, and, and I think it has to be dealt with in a different way than, than in this. This is, this is for the, we're voting on the price change, and this, the concern you have really has nothing to do with the bylaw that we're voting on.
I realize...
So this was, this is something we'll have to take as information and, and look at a different date.
I do realize that when I gave it to, I can't pronounce the name, Mr. Hurry, do you mind if I just say Brian? I gave it to him, and I explained the situation, and that I would be here tonight, because I thought it would be a way of having it aired. So I thank you for your time, and you will certainly let me know what happens. That's not likely to be discussed tonight, or...
Most likely will come back at a SBC meeting or something like that, like a council committee meeting.
Okay.
But at this, at this time, we won't be making a decision on this, because we will be deciding on the bylaw that we're, that we're voting on today. But, and then once we've decided, a letter will be issued to you.
And I look forward to getting a letter from you concerning your situation, that would be just great.
Mr. Workinteen, can we make a note that this comes back to council at our first SBC?
Either that, or I would suggest that I haven't had an opportunity to speak with the manager of the solid waste department. Perhaps if council is agreeable to referring this to administration for follow-up, administration would be, would be able to then follow up with Mrs. Penner.
Okay, that sounds good. We will, we'll be leaving it with administration, and they will be contacting you once they've made a decision on this.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, is there anyone wishing to object to this file? Okay. Take the podium and put your name and address.
My name is Maria Gaye. I live at nine, eight Fernwood Bay. I have a totally different issue than Ms. Penner there, that my garbage is being picked up, except that one time when I had some bags, and it was not picked up. I did call Eldon, he's very personable, that afternoon, they came and picked up the bag. My issue is, all, the majority of my neighbors put out three to five garbage bags on a weekly basis, likewise with their blue boxes, they're usually overfilled, and extra boxes. I barely get half a garbage bag a month, and not much more in the blue boxes, because I'm very cautious of being green, sort of. But the thing is, I'm paying just as much as all my other neighbors. And also, we have the issue that we have, unfortunately, people that live on our street just throw their garbage out of the car, or walk by on the sidewalk, or throw it on your lawn. But is there perhaps, for the future, a more equitable way, whether it is having garbage bags priced per whatever, or having them tagged like other jurisdictions do? Just something to consider, because everything seems to be going up, and if you listen to the news, I mean, the markets went down, but food prices are going to be coming up, and everything seems to be coming up. So, let's keep everything on a budget. I mean, I have to keep on budget. I know the city has to do likewise, but let's go for wise spending.
Okay, so are you, are you objecting to the file?
Yes, I think I am objecting and would like to see some changes.
Okay. Are there any questions for the objector? None? Okay. Is there anyone else that would wish to object?
I'm Adele Oduick, from five forty-seven Reimer, and I'd think the same as what Maria was stating, I'm objecting to that, because I live by myself, and I barely have a kitchen garbage bag full a lot of times, especially winter. And then if people put garbage out, or not even put garbage out, they leave the garbage outside. And then I got animals under my patio that, I don't know what kind of animals that come and eat, it could be skunks, could be whatever, like, I mean, and all these people that have put out the garbage, household stuff out, especially, you know, the inside stuff, and a lot of times, they leave the garbage for months and, and outside, whether in the can...
We're getting off topic again. The, so this is a formal objection to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just, I will say that the, the challenge is that to drive a truck around the city, it costs the same whether we pick up half a bag or we pick up two or three bags. But I think, is there, we'll, we'll move on. Is there anyone else that would like to object to this file? Is there anyone else that would like to object to this file? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to object to this file? Seeing none? We will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Council Swaigstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move second reading.
Okay. And seconded by Councilor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As has been noted, this is a renewal of an existing bylaw we have. It's been standard practice in the city to charge a set amount on the property tax bill that goes for, for garbage pickup. In this case here, there is a four-dollar per year increase, which is very much in keeping with the, with the increase in previous years. Just in reference to the question that's been raised in terms of, in terms of why it is the same for everyone, the reality is that this is a, this is a service that we provide to all homes, to all households. And yes, there are some homes that, you know, have larger families and have more garbage, and there are other households that have smaller families. But at the end of the day, it's still garbage pickup. You still have the truck going by each, each location there, it still has that cost in terms of providing that service. And the fact is that there are a lot of things. If we were to start parcelling it down for, for everything in the city based on, only on the exact, exact amount that we use, we could argue that someone who owns two or three vehicles is having a much bigger impact in our city infrastructure than someone who doesn't own a vehicle at all. And yet, of course, the property tax ends up the same, it's, it's simply based on your property tax assessment. We have excellent pickup service within Steinbach. I hear many good things about the pickup service we have. Obviously, it's not perfect, nothing is, but as far as the, the efficiency of the people that work for our solid waste department, it is, it is excellent. And so, I think it's appropriate that we continue with the current practice, that we continue with garbage being picked up the way that it is, with the small increases here to allow for the, for the inflationary cost, but to, to continue on. So hence, I think we should do a second reading.
Anything further?
Yeah, I would just like to comment that council is very mindful of responsible spending and wise spending, as given from our steady session where there'll be a zero net increase, again, not even adjusting for inflation. So I think it is legitimate, once things like these come up, that we just raise the minor amount, which is a really small amount, four dollars a year, for the excellent service we are receiving, and it allows us to pay for what we're doing, but also prepare for future needs of what we have to do as it comes to garbage collection.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything in closing? Okay. Thank, thank you, council. Yes, I, I do believe that, I, I will support this motion too. I think we need to move forward on this. I think we do give great service, and it comes at a very low cost. And the challenge with living in a community that's urban like we are is that we share everything, and we have to share the cost of, of the services that we get. So with that, I will call for the question, all in favor? Opposed? That's Carrie. Number eight, report, there's, there's no delegation, there's no reports, recommendations from the manager. We will go to administration. Nine A, accounts payable, back of the package. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Penner. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That is Carrie. B, nine B, that is accounts receivable, transferred to taxes, that is page fifteen. I'd like a motion to approve that. There's a motion on page fifteen. Motion to approve. Councilor Swaigstra, seconded by Councilor Penner. Anything to comment?
I have a question to administration. If you could just explain, are these invoices that businesses receive, and they just, they just don't pay them, and what would these invoices be for, in addition to their property taxes, for example?
Generally, these would relate to services that the city has provided direct to the business. For the most part, it will most often relate to garbage collection, where there is a separate invoice for commercial garbage service.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, call for the question, all in favor? Opposed? That's Carrie. Number nine C, we have two thousand and eighteen supplementary taxes added, page seventeen. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Every year, the city receives what's called the supplementary assessment listing from the provincial assessor's office. That listing represents properties for which improvements have been made during the previous two years, but have not yet been picked up on the annual regular assessment roll of the city of Steinbach. What that does then is, it provides the city the authority to assess what's called supplementary taxes, which is permitted under the municipal act, and then essentially charging for these improvements for the time that they were being used by the, the owners of the subject properties. You'll see a number of schedules, if you refer to page sixteen. There's a, a brief summary as to some of the, some of the particular properties that are impacted by these supplementary taxes. And there is an amount with a draft resolution on page thirty to approve the supplementary added taxes of nine hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents.
Okay, council, as, as we've heard, there is a motion on page thirty. I need a, I need a mover for that motion. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Swaigstra. Okay, any comments? Councilor Hebert? No? Anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, that this is, as the city manager noted, this is... Just briefly, that this is, as the city manager noted, this is standard practice. We do receive supplementary taxes because there is construction within the city and this is something that we budget for on a regular basis as well. So there's nothing surprising about that.
Okay, thank you. Anything in closing, Counsel Hebert?
Well, it's pretty clear.
Okay. Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, nine D, we've got twenty eighteen supplementary taxes cancellation, that's on page twenty-seven. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this?
Similar, but the reverse of my previous explanation. Sometimes there are properties that are amended either by demolition of existing buildings or a change in use that actually reduces the tax liability for a property. Then that would result in a tax cancellation for the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. And I would recommend that counsel approve that tax cancellation.
Okay, counsel, can I have a motion to approve that also on page thirty? Counsel Siemens, second by Counsel Penner. Okay, Counsel Siemens, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, as we've heard, is pretty straightforward as well. There are, there's a reduction in taxes of all things, especially when they, either demolition or various other reasons, then they actually have, we have opportunity to cancel taxes and that this is owed to the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Anything further, Counsel Penner? Anything further, counsel? Anything in closing? Okay. Okay, counsel, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Nine E, farm use payback, page thirty-one. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this?
This is also a, an adjustment to the assessed value of property within the city of Steinbeck. It relates specifically to what's called farm use. There is a special provision within the municipal assessment act that allows property that is being actively used for farming to receive a reduced assessed value for purposes of taxation. However, if there is a change in use of that farm use property to other purposes, for example, commercial or residential, there is a provision within the legislation that permits the city to calculate tax recovery for the previous five years on that subject property. Recommendation is for counsel to approve the amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents for that purpose.
Okay, so this amount is over a five-year period?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, on page thirty-one, we have a motion. Do I have a mover? Counsel Siemens, second by Counsel Swakesworth. Any comments, Counsel Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for one corporation, and that's the Stonebridge Development Corporation where a primary healthcare facility was put up. So they did build that on farmland and this is part of planning forward, like to, like to taxes on that property.
Okay, anything further, Counsel Swakesworth? Anything further by counsel? Anything in closing? Okay. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Nine F, we have interim operating budget on page thirty-two. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this?
Yes, each year, the city of Steinbeck must by provision of the municipal act adopt an annual operating budget. However, in the interim, there is also a requirement that until counsel has the ability to review and consider its annual financial plan, the city is also required to adopt an interim operating budget. Counsel will find that on page thirty-two, recommendation is to approve.
Okay, we have most approved on page thirty-two. Can I have a mover? Counsel Swakesworth, second by Counsel Penner. Counsel Swakesworth, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we don't approve this, no one will get paid in January and February. There will be no services throughout the whole city. Everything will be off. City Hall will be closed. No services, no garbage pickup, nothing. We need to do this. I hope I've made my case. We need to pass this operating, this interim operating budget so the city can continue to function until we pass our budgets.
Counsel Penner?
No comment.
Anything in closing?
I hope it passes.
Well, Counsel Swakesworth, you're a hard act to follow, but yes, it's very important. We must, we must approve this. So I'm going to call for the question right away. Call for the question. All those in, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, nine G, RBC borrowing, page thirty-three. Mr. Workin, could you introduce this also, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is an annual resolution that administration presents to council with recommendation to approve. Purpose is for the, the city's banking services, if the city is ever in an overdraft position during its annual operations, this does provide for an interim borrowing for that purpose. Recommendation, as I mentioned, would be for counsel to approve this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to approve on page thirty-three. Do I have a mover? Okay, Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Swakesworth. Go ahead, Counsel Hebert.
I would say this is probably very much like Michael explained earlier. I guess in order to keep business flowing, this might just need to be done. So I think I'm in favor of that.
Counsel Swakesworth?
You said it all. I can't have it.
Anything in closing?
No.
Yes, counsel, this, this actually gives us the money to do what we were doing in the, in the, in the first interim operating budget. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Eight, Manitoba Sustainable Development Re-Community Forest Grant Agreement, page thirty-four. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this?
Yes, there is a draft resolution for council's consideration on page thirty-four. The contract or draft contract that is provided by community forest, forestry or sustainable development, I'm sorry, is also attached. It does indicate the terms, conditions, and requirements under the Dutch Elm Disease Control Program for which the city would be eligible for partial grant funding. Recommendation is for counsel to approve entering into this agreement.
Okay, for this agreement, we need a, a motion, like moves to be moved. So do I have a mover? Okay, Counsel Siemens, second by Counsel Penner. Go ahead, Counsel Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a forest grant agreement that I think replaces the Dutch Elm program that we've been under the last probably twenty-five years. And it's similar, like they've just redone the grant and reduced the funding of course. But it is vital. We've got a lot of elm trees that were planted in the nineteen forties and fifties in Steinbeck that grace our downtown core. And this agreement, the Dutch Elm agreement, agreement over the years has been part of the tree and insecticide use on those trees. Hopefully, we can continue to do that to save a lot of our gorgeous elm trees downtown. So for that reason, whatever opportunity we have to collect funds from the province to do that type of work, we need to.
Anything further, Counsel Penner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's great to see that there are programs out there that are assisting in protecting our tree canopy, a framework as to what to follow. And any, any extra funding and grants that were available to take advantage of, we need to make sure that we move forward on.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Anything in closing? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, nine I, that is twenty nineteen council meetings on page forty-seven. I want to highlight Wednesday, January second, twenty nineteen. Recommendation from administration is that that council meeting is very light and recommendation is to cancel that, but to cancel it, we need to have a resolution. Do we have a resolution for cancellation? Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Hebert? Any comments?
No, given the timing, right around New Year's. It's a light agenda anyways, it makes sense to just.
Okay, anything?
I agree with the amendment.
Okay. Then call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, nine J, bylaw twenty, twenty-one oh two, Harmony Lane Public Reserve Closing, third reading, page forty-eight. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this?
Yes, this file has recently appeared before council for a public hearing and a second reading. Bylaw twenty-one oh two does involve a proposed closing of a portion of the public reserve next to Harmony Lane. Manitoba Community Planning has advised the city that it requests the completion of third reading before this bylaw is submitted to the minister for approval. And just as information and also attached to the file subsequent to the public hearing where there was an objector, the developer did reach out to, to the objector regarding his concerns. And they have proposed an alternate solution to which the objector is amenable. That information, again, is in the package. And as a result of that, community planning's requirement as well as the, the follow-up recommendation is counsel give this bylaw a third reading.
Okay, counsel, can I have a motion for a third reading? Counsel Swakesworth, second by Counsel Penner? Okay, Counsel Swakesworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager mentioned, this is a, basically a reconfiguration of, of land that's being developed and a closing of a public reserve in order to accommodate that. The most notable thing here is that there had been an objection and I remember that hearing quite well. It was a challenging situation because we didn't want to hold up the whole thing because that could affect, that could be in more variances in the future because then that would affect the lot line configurations. And so I'm very pleased to see that the developer reached out to Mr. Drolle and offered this, this solution, offered up the easement and that makes everyone happy. And that's, that's the type of city we live in. I mean, this is not the first time that, that someone who's putting forward an application reaches out to a, a neighbor, an objector in this way. And it's great to see that type of thing happen in Steinbeck because it's a win-win for both the Mr. Drolle, who can withdraw his objection, and also for the developer, and also for the city because now we end up with a better development as a result.
Anything further, Counsel Penner?
Yeah, I just want to concur with that. I, I really appreciate the developer doing that because really, it was, it was one objection. It's not, that's not significant and he probably could away, gotten away with just going as he planned. So that the developer would make the effort when he really didn't have to at that point is commendable. So I express my appreciation to the developers.
Anything further, counsel? Anything in closing? Yes, counsel, I, I too, I agree. I think this really, really says a lot about the developer and how he wants to work with the, the community and that neighborhood. And I think too, if he's taking care of all the objections, it's our, it's our duty to, to push this thing through. So without further ado, I'll ask for the question. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Nine K, bylaw twenty, twenty-one ten, council remuneration, first and second reading. This is on page fifty-six. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this bylaw does relate to council remuneration and it is being presented for consideration by council due to a proposed change by the federal government with respect to the Income Tax Act. A portion of compensation that has historically been paid to members of council has been considered what's called a non-accountable allowance. And as a result, that portion of councilor's compensation has been considered tax exempt. The proposed budget change for the federal budget twenty nineteen is to remove the tax-exempt status of that non-accountable allowance, essentially making all council compensation taxable. Essentially, that would result in a significant reduction in the, in the take-home pay of members of council. This proposed bylaw twenty-one ten recommends a, an adjustment to council's pay to reflect this change to the tax exemption status. And it is provided for members on page fifty-eight and fifty-nine. If council is, or wishes to amend the, the compensation rates in accordance with this change to federal income tax regulations, recommendation is to give this bylaw first and second reading.
Okay, counsel, how would you like to proceed?
Most approved.
Most approved. Counsel Siemens, seconder. Counsel Swakesworth. Counsel Siemens, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in June of two thousand seventeen, former council thought that we were dealing with council compensation for the last time, for quite a while. And that all changed this past September in an omnibus by our federal government that has reduced the opportunity for council to have a, a tax credit of one-third the salary. So the increase in council salaries is meant to preserve the level of take-home pay that current members of council have, is at, or near its current levels. It is meant to act as a counter to the effect of the elimination of a tax credit that will affect one-third of the salary of elected officials across Canada. The federal government approved the elimination of the exemption on June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, which is specific to elected officials that comes to effect January the first, two thousand and nineteen, but was part of an omnibus this past September. The change in this tax law will provide more than thirty million dollars in additional revenues under the Income Tax Act. The federal government's position was that it was an exemption, is that, and I quote, "It provided an advantage that other Canadians do not enjoy." See, the Steinbeck council are provided a salary for the position but do not receive allowances for in-city travel, office, communications, or attending meetings and community events within our community. In the last election, we have all agreed to be open and transparent in our work of city council. And this is to speak to that issue. This potential loss of take-home pay would amount roughly two hundred dollars per month for councillors and at least double that to four hundred dollars for the mayor with a budget impact of roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars a year for council. It was agreed that we would not use new dollars but find the money within our current budget. As indicated earlier by Mayor Funk, the city is not increasing its mill rate so there should be no tax increase to Steinbeck taxpayers. For all those reasons, I put the motion forward to approve this change in our compensation bylaw. And as part of that, also, we would be repealing bylaw twenty-eighty-four, which was enacted last June of two thousand seventeen.
Counsel Swakesworth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, it's always a challenging topic whenever the, the issue is council remuneration. As Counsel Siemens had noted, we had a committee that had been tasked a couple of years ago to, to have a look at compensation and to evaluate and review, and they made their recommendations. Should point out that the salaries that were recommended and that have been set in place had specifically taken into account the, the tax structure that we have in place that has, that has been in place for a long time. Certainly, long before I was on council, the one-third was, was a, of a non-accountable allowance was not specifically taxed. And so this, and this affects municipalities across the country. We're not the only ones in this situation. And so the intent here is simply so that the take-home pay of members of council remains the same as what it is now. It is not an increase in anyone's actual bottom line. It is simply, is unfortunately, it's shifting some of the burden away from the federal government because they're choosing to change their tax rules and they get extra money. And then in order to make sure that city officials, that city councillors and the mayor are paid the same, the city has no choice if we're going to have the take-home pay the same, the same to, to do the increase. Lots of other municipalities are making this change, just taking a quick look at some stories that have been in the news. And these are the ones that have been reported. I'm sure there are plenty of others that, that haven't been reported, but we saw the town in Niverville has just made this adjustment. The city of Brandon, back in October, made the adjustment. The city of Morden, I know in Saskatchewan, the city of Saskatoon, the city of Regina, the city of Yorkton, many, many others. Those are just a few in just a few minutes that you can find that it made the same change. So again, the intent here is simply to, to keep the take-home pay at the same level and, and now the compensation rates are set in such a way to take into account the fact that the, the tax structure has changed.
Thank you. Anything further?
I just want to make one simple statement. I just want to make it very clear that this is a salary adjustment, it's not a wage increase.
Anything further? Anything in closing? Well, counsel, it is always difficult when you're setting your own wages. And, and, and we have to remember that there is a value for the job that we do for our community. And that can't be, we, we can't negate that. And we have to make sure that, that, that value is there. And agreeing with, with Counsel Swakesworth that this is an adjustment that needs to be made. So at this time, I'll just call for the question. call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Number ten, council question, period. Oh.
Mr. Mayor, if council's amenable, I'd also recommend second.
Oh, second reading? Uh, sorry. Um, mover for second reading? Uh, Counsel Siemens, seconder. Oh, Counsel Penner. Any comments? No? Anything further? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, second reading is approved. Uh, council question, period? Any questions of council? Okay, seeing none. Eleven A, correspondence and, and petitions. A RCMP grant letter, uh, six, uh, page sixty-four. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Take it as information? Okay. B, mobility disadvantaged transportation program, page sixty-six. The twenty eighteen interim payment. How would you like to proceed? Take it as information? C, Steinbach Chamber of Commerce, page sixty-eight, grant request. How would you like to proceed? Take this as information? Okay. B, Minonite Heritage Village, page eighty-six, grant request. How would you like to proceed? Take it as information? And Crime Stoppers, grant request. That's page one twenty-nine, oh, one twenty-four. Uh, would you like to proceed, counsel? Just take that as information?
Sure.
Seine Rat River Conservation District. We have the, uh, meetings from October sixteenth, twenty eighteen, page one twenty-seven. We'll take that as information. And Agape House, read the proclamation for December sixth, twenty eighteen, page thirty-one. Uh, counsel, we will all be busy during that time. We will be at a, at a meeting at, uh, with the RMF Hanover. So, uh, I guess we'll just take that as information also. And number twelve, other business. Seeing none. Uh, thirteen, uh, I need a motion for German. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner, or, I mean, Hebert. And, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Uh, this is carried. And the next regular council meeting is Tuesday, December eighteenth at, or, twenty eighteen at seven-thirty. Thank you.